All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for tuning into this special meeting, the DDA Planning Commission meeting on, what is today's date? March 21st. It is 6:00 PM and I will ask Secretary DeBolt to go ahead and kick us off with roll call, please.
Schenkel.
Present.
Mutcha. Manchester.
Present.
Holmes.
Here.
Cox. Newman. Wartella.
Present.
DeLong.
Present.
DeBolt, yes.
Thank you, sir. And we just have one agenda item on our plate here tonight, so I'm going to kick it over to staff and have them bring us.
We'll need approval of, do we have, yep, approval of the agenda and then set us in comments if there are any.
Got it. All right. So we have the agenda in front of us with just one item. We do need approval of that, so we'll call for a motion to approve that agenda.
This is Manchester. I make a motion and approve.
Motion by Manchester.
Wartella, I second that.
Support by Wartella. And roll call, please. Or no, I'm sorry, we'll do all in favor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, nope, thank you. Old habits die hard from online meetings doing roll call all the time. All right, so we will open up to public comment. This is where anyone joining us in the room, or if we have anyone online, can speak for public four minutes. And if anyone likes to do that, we'll open that up now.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open it up for those in the room. Right now, we don't have anyone electronically, but if they join, we'll see them join.
Great, thank you. And Jackie, I think you know the rules, but make sure you state your name and your address for us, please.
Yeah. Hi. Jackie Coney, 515 South Main Street, but representing Mackenzie's Bakery and Vicksburg Land Company, 101 South Main Street. And 101 East, 103 East Prairie Street. I got a lot of addresses. So we're here tonight to talk a little bit about the Brownfield Plan, the proposed Brownfield Plan for 101 and 103 East Prairie, which will eventually, in the very near future, be Mackenzie's Bakery. And I'm just thrilled to be able to ask for your support in, I think this is a resolution to support the Brownfield Plan for 101 and 103 East Prairie. Lisa Phillips is our environmental specialist. We've given a couple of presentations in the past, but we're here to answer any questions. And I just can't say enough to everyone involved in the village politics that this kind of tool is really helpful for everybody that wants to renovate a building downtown and bring it back to a really working, functioning, beautiful place. So I thank you for listening and your potential support. And I'm here for questions.
Anyone else in the room? No one online?
No, no citizens. I would like to turn it over to Jared Balka, the village attorney on this issue.
Okay.
That he can go into a brief summary on what's in front of the DDA and why we have it here and the impact positive staff feels for the Village of Vicksburg and our support for this. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Balka.
Well, just a second, Jared. I'm gonna have to figure out audio because you're not coming through audio-wise.
If you, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right. Give me a test. One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Oh, it sounded perfect.
All right. Perfect. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. Yeah, as Jim kind of outlined, this project's coming to you for your nod of support and approval for a pass-through resolution to allow the Brownfield Authority to capture Brownfield tax increment and to reimburse the developer for eligible activities. In order to support the project, you know, the DDA does have priority for capture unless it chose to support a project and allow the increment generated from the project to pass through and support it. The Brownfield Plan has been submitted. It's requesting eligible activities of about $580,000. The majority of that is demolition, lead and asbestos abatement. The projected reimbursement period, under the current assumptions, it does not fully reimburse over the term of the Brownfield Plan, but that could change depending on the final assessment of the project. Again, your support is necessary in order for the project to move forward to the Brownfield Authority as well as the City Council for consideration. The Brownfield Tool, given that Vicksburg is not a poor community, is one of the available tools for the village to be able to support redevelopment in this downtown, as well as the DDA. But with a project like this, the DDA cannot support demolition, lead and asbestos abatement. That is where the Brownfield Authority comes into play and is a better tool to support this type of development. So the request before you would be to support and allow a pass-through of the available increment generated from the project to flow through and support the Brownfield Authority and their redevelopment or their reimbursement to the developer for eligible activities. That's kind of a high-level overview of what's before you this evening. I'm sure you're all familiar with the project at this point. I'd be happy to drill down on any specific details that you would like me to do.
And then if the board members just state your name, if, but Jared's here to answer any of your questions, go ahead and ask him.
This is Member Wartella. I'm wondering a little bit about wording involved with this. There is a Brownfield redevelopment project that I've seen in the material that comes to us, and there is a Brownfield Plan. The plan is going to be used to, on the redevelopment project. Is that wording correct? Or am I making too much of it?
Yeah, the Brownfield Plan was submitted to support the project, and the Brownfield Plan reflects the scope of the project itself and what eligible activities are being requested for reimbursement. And that has to be recommended from the Brownfield Authority and approved by the council in order to move forward. However, this plan would need the support from the Downtown Development Authority. Otherwise, the Downtown Development Authority has priority for any incremental capture generated from the project because it is within the DDA's boundaries. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Now, the Brownfield Plan would include the authority tax increment pass-through agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct, yep.
Thank you.
Jared, it's Rick Holmes. I've actually brought up the issue of using Brownfield money for downtown buildings for several years, and I support the idea. I believe I even asked you once about this, and as best my memory can recollect, the response was is that the buildings downtown, there's a cost structure that makes them a little bit more expensive than, again, something like the Rim and Rail Project. And I'm just curious, has anything changed or is there something here that's making the approach with this property more manageable? I'm just trying to understand, you know, again, the conversations that I've had with various individuals over the years and why now we are focusing downtown, which again, I think is a great use of the Brownfield money.
You know, I guess there, I can't point to anything specific outside the fact that this project is a little more unique, given the fact that it is within the DDA's boundaries, right? So there are a few additional parties at the table here that need to come together for a project like this. Whereas a project not located in the DDA, you know, it would come to the Brownfield Authority and come to the council. This project, you know, given it's kind of a phased project, you know, that's probably another aspect. The developer's gonna incur, you know, pretty much all these activities upfront, and you know, the build-out will take a little longer with their phasing. And perhaps maybe Jackie could speak to that timing, but you know, there's, the project itself is not any different than any other redevelopment project. It is in the downtown. You're dealing with existing conditions. You know, you're trying to redevelop in a built environment. So naturally, you will be faced with higher costs than, you know, like a new construction-type project. I don't know if that directly answers your question, but you know, every project is unique in its own nature, and you really kind of got to approach every project like it's a completely new one. And you open up the toolbox you have available to you as the village and try to figure out ways to help support those.
No, I appreciate that. So I guess the question I have for staff is that, does this mean now that we are looking at using Brownfield money then for downtown buildings and renovating them?
We would, if the developer approaches us and fills out a Brownfield application, would evaluate anywhere within the village, including downtown. I might, part of the conversation, as I remember, if this is what you're citing, is there, there is, and Jared, correct me at any point I'm in error, but there's also a dollar amount that a project or an investment by a developer would need to be at a level for the village to look at using the revolving fund to incentivize that. So it's not a tool that we would apply for smaller projects. And I believe that number, Jared, is a six-figure number, but you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And council member, I do recall you raising the issue prior, and I think getting better understanding the question now. I think, you know, to Jim's point, there is a kind of dollar threshold. You know, this particular incentive that's being requested is TIF reimbursement, right? So, you know, it's kind of the self-fulfilling one where, you know, if the developer invests an amount of money, generates, you know, incremental property taxes, you know, they have the ability to be reimbursed for their activities. Not every project is going to be able to, you know, generate a big bump, which, you know, for the property owner, that's not a bad thing, right? They're not getting hit with a significant tax increase with whatever improvement they may have. So yeah, there is kind of a dollar threshold. You know, my own personal one, when I speak with clients, is it's kind of the $500,000 mark. You know, under 500 grand, you know, there's not, there typically is not a huge impact on a property tax bill or, you know, potential property tax abatement. It really doesn't offer a ton of benefit to a project. So again, that's my kind of, that's my own personal level that I usually counsel clients on. But that's not to say that you can't, you can't figure out a way to support a project for less than that. It really all depends on what kind of tools you have available. And perhaps on maybe a facade project or something like that, where a property owner simply wants to add a facelift to their property, maybe it's programmed through the DDA that the DDA may have available as it builds up its war chest in the tax increment. And some of that, you know, won't come until we get projects like this redeveloped that are going to have a long-term impact to the DDA's budget as well. So, you know, again, every project's kind of unique in its own nature, and you really just kind of step back and look at all the tools that may be available to support it.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff or staff attorney? Hearing none. Jim, can you help me with kind of what we're looking for on this resolution here?
Correct. It would be a, staff is recommending support and a motion on the resolution. A hard copy was placed in front of all of you. And then a roll call vote on that. We're recommending the DDA to support this endeavor. We will then report out to the Brownfield Board the results of the DDA and as well as the council. So the staff is recommending a motion and support and a roll call vote on the resolution. And for the record, the resolution will be 03212022-1DDA.
I think Secretary DeBolt's hoping that you're gonna share that number with him later. Any further questions? Otherwise, we entertain a motion of support.
This is Member Wartella, and I move that the Vicksburg Planning Commission slash DDA supports the Village of Vicksburg council approving the Brownfield Plan proposed for 101 and 103 Prairie Street Brownfield Redevelopment Project as submitted.
We have a motion on the table from Member Wartella. Do you have support?
This is Tanya DeLong. I support.
Support from DeLong, and we will do a roll call vote, please. Mr. Bolt.
Schenkel.
Yes.
Manchester.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Wartella.
Yes.
DeLong.
Yes.
DeBolt, yes. Question for Manager Mallory. Do I still do a roll call for the people that are not here?
No, they'll, they're not here, so they're absent of the vote. And I'll take care of, staff will take care of the resolution, forming it and certifying it as well. So, and that'll be part of the April Planning Commission minutes is that certified copy.
So this motion is best 6:00.
Okay, thank you.
Staff, thanks, and we thank you for attending this special, special meeting.
Any member comments from this group before we adjourn? Hearing none. We'll adjourn this meeting at 6:19. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night. Hearing none, we'll adjourn this meeting at 6:19. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Good evening, Vicksburg. Welcome to tonight's regular in-person hybrid meeting of the Vicksburg Brownfield Board. Today, Monday, March 21st, 2022. If I had my law hammer, I'd call this meeting to order. We have a, we'll take attendance, if you would please, Mr. Mallory.
Attendance for, uh, Brownfield meeting on March 21st, 2022 at 6:30. Member Olson?
Here.
Member Wagner?
Here.
Member Holmes?
Here.
Member DeBruin?
Here.
Member Merrill?
Here.
Member Reaster?
Here.
Member Goss?
Here.
Member Keller?
Here.
Chairperson Frisbee?
Here.
We, hm? We have an agenda in front of us tonight. Um, staff, were there any updates or changes?
N- no, sir.
Hearing no changes. Is any chairperson have, uh, comments on it or changes they want to see done? Hearing none, we have an agenda in front of us. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. So moved.
All support.
Motion moved by Trustee Keller, support by Trustee Wagner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have an agenda in front of us for the night. Tonight, we have citizens' comments on the agenda and non-agenda items. Citizens must state their full name and address. Uh, we'll limit our time to four minutes. If there's anyone on the phone, I think Mr. Mallory will give you directions how to do that.
We have no one electronically on.
We have no one that comments in the audience either, so we'll pass on to approval of the minutes. Anyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting? On, uh, March 21st. The minutes aren't in here.
No, the minutes we indicated will be of the next 16.
Aye, very good. So what we have in front of us tonight is a application for 101 and 103 East Prairie. Uh, we're in attendance tonight, Jared Belka, uh, and the Vicksburg Land Company, Jackie Coney and Lisa Phillips. And we have a request in front of us to approve the Brownfield application. So at that point, I'll let, uh, staff and Mr. Belka walk us through this.
Sure, I'll turn it right over to, to Jared for sake of time on, uh, on the issue in front of the Brownfield.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. This project, this is the formal request before you this evening, uh, from our last meeting. We had the informational session kind of outlining everything that was being, uh, requested here. Uh, the, the Brownfield Plan is requesting, um, tax increment financing reimbursement. Uh, the eligible activities consist mainly of demo and lead and asbestos abatement. Um, the, the proposed, uh, request is for tax increment financing for, uh, up to 25 years, the lesser of full reimbursement for that term. Um, the developer, uh, is proposing the project here to be completed in phases. Um, everybody's kind of heard of the first phase and, and, uh, developers outlined the second phase. The request did go before the DDA and the DDA did support a pass-through resolution. Uh, that would be necessary in order to allow the Brownfield Authority, uh, to capture the tax increment, uh, revenue to be used to reimburse the developer. Um, I'd be happy to dive into any, any specific details you'd like. Um, obviously, this is the same project that was, uh, before you, um, for the, uh, the prior meeting. And this, this, tonight's request is to make a formal recommendation to the council uh, for their consideration of approval. So happy to, happy to dive in at, at any level that you guys have, may have questions on.
Thank you, Jared. Do we, do you have, Lisa, you, you came prepared to give us a quick overview? Was that correct? I think from the last meeting, we discussed that.
Yeah. Um, can we, can we pull up the, um, presentation from, from the last meeting? I think that, um, I, I, I thank you, everybody, for having us here again and for, um, looking at this. Uh, the overview, I think what we wanted to talk about is answer any questions mostly anybody had about the actual tax increment financing, um, but also with all of you having the Brownfield Plan actually in your hands, you might have other, other questions too. And we can go, we can go down, um, there, just kind of familiarize you with it a little bit through the same presentation. Um, not sure if we went through the tax increment part. That's been added to this presentation this time, uh, to be helpful. Um, so it is a, it is a Brownfield project. We talked last time about the history, um, of the buildings, um, and that the facade improvements have been completed and that this will be a, a two-phase project. The first pa- phase being the Mackenzie's Bakery in the 103, um, Prairie site. And then the second phase being, um, continued use, um, for, for various purposes of the, the main floor of 101, but probably a higher and better use coming, um, into the future. And then, um, in the future, um, the upstairs being a residential hotel, um, some kind of, uh, something along those, those, those lines. Kind of keep going down, I think I did that. Um, very importantly, the reason why, um, this project, according to, um, the Brownfield, uh, Legislation Act 381, is an eligible site, is because it's functionally obsolete. And in the Brownfield Plan, you'll find a letter from the assessor, um, documenting that as required. So it is definitely an eligible property. Um, historic is also a reason why it can be, um, eligible as a Brownfield, but that's, that designation is in progress and we didn't rely upon that, but it certainly is an historic property. So then this is, um, a brief refresher on how, um, tax incremental, um, financing works. And I just kind of stole these, um, slides from the presentation, um, that Eagle and I did, um, to the Brownfield Authority back in 2016. But it's not something that people use every day and it's not something that I would, I would remember if I had heard it once or twice, um, even. Um, but it's important to note that the, um, tax increment increase is, um, comes, it's, what we're talking about is capture of the incremental taxes, um, that are generated because a developer has come and put in money into a property to redevelop it and the taxes go up a bit and the taxes go up. So all of the taxing jurisdictions throughout the course of the, the term of the Brownfield Plan will get their original taxes that they're getting today. Um, but that increment then will be captured, um, from the proper jurisdictions. In this case, that'll be all local jurisdictions, um, and used to pay back the developer for eligible activities. And when we, when we get down, it's important for the authority to know that it's only eligible activities being used to, and, and those activities are described under the law. Um, so we have an eligible property and we can reimburse using increment taxes for eligible activities. So, um, so they're, they're from, from the property taxes, um, that are paid on it. And I think we can go down one, one more, Jim. Um, I probably even talked about this. Uh, only the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority can authorize the TIF. Um, and as we talked about, it doesn't exist until the property's been approved. Um, and the developer pays the cost upfront. Um, so the property gets improved and then the reimbursement comes back. And this is kind of a nice little, um, picture that shows the initial value and kind of what the property looked like, not, not so good. And then, um, the, uh, value increases when the property, um, there's been some redevelopment that's happened that puts, um, employment, residence, some, some, something back economically to the community. And it's that increment, um, based on that development that goes to reimburse the developer. Um, this is just another picture of what the, um, tax revenues, that, that bottom green part. Um, you, you have that original, um, back on the left-hand side, you have the original taxable value. The developer puts a lot of money into it, the taxes go up, not by nearly as much as the developer puts into it. Um, and the value goes up, but everything in white there is what is being captured by the developer. So the original taxable value will keep going up, uh, you know, a little bit. But once the developer gets paid back, it will have a big jump to it. Mm-hmm.
The next, 2027?
Uh, no, it's much further out from, from there, yeah, because it's a, it's a, it's a 25-year plan to reimburse the developer. If the developer's not fully reimbursed by then, which we don't anticipate it necessarily, but sometimes things happen and it might get reimbursed sooner. Then there's five additional years after that to, um, that where the authority captures, um, the taxes um, for use at other projects throughout the Village of Vicksburg. Um, and then it will go back on the tax rolls.
So I believe that 2027 was when it starts, so there's a five-year period.
That's when it starts, yes, yep, yep.
I just wanted for clarity, I'm, I'm not sure I got that from the Planning Commission, but we are not going to use any existing Brownfield monies for this. This is all future taxable income. A portion of it comes back to pay the, the developer.
That, that's right, yeah. Some, some projects you might use, um, some of your revolving funds in order to fund these activities, and then the authority gets paid back for what you loaned out on the activities. Um, but in this case, the developer's funding the activities and the developer will, will get reimbursed. Mm-hmm. Sometimes it's even a mixture of the two, but, yep. So in this case, we're not, um, going for any state school taxes, just, just local. Um, but it's a, a slide that just, if you do look at, um, state taxes, know that the money doesn't get taken away from the schools, it does get made up. So, um, the, the Brownfield TIF must occur on an eligible property. We talked about the reason why it's eligible, um, and, um, and that is including a locally-approved Brownfield Plan. And if you do, um, use state school tax capture, there's another level of, um, review that goes through Eagle, the Michigan Department of, um, Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, um, to review that. I'm gonna go down to the next one. Um, so, um, this is the eligible activities. And I think we'll go down to the next one. Uh, so eligible activities include things like, um, the owner due diligence, in this case, the Phase One, and the hazardous building materials inspections for lead and asbestos, demolition, and in this case, it's to create openings between the buildings, um, remove the ceiling to put in a new ceiling to create the proper fire ra- rating, um, lead and asbestos abatement, the actual preparation and implementation of the Brownfield Plan, and then for authority administration, um, and local, into the local Brownfield Revolving Fund, um, that last five years. We can keep going down. Um, you've probably seen this. This is a table that's in the plan that outlines, um, all those activities and the estimated cost. And then, um, the, the, um, the property has an investment of about $2.8 million. It's gonna open here in April. Um, the Mackenzie's Bakery will begin, um, tax capture in 2027, so it's delayed five years. Um, the law allows for that in order to allow, uh, development to be more completed. years. The law allows for that in order to allow development to be more completed before you start capturing the taxes. And then it's only local tax capture. So the assessed value in 2021, which will be the base year, is almost $100,000. For 2027, after the redevelopment, it's estimated the value to be $414,000. And we did work with the assessor on those numbers. And in this table, which you have in your packet with the Brownfield Plan, gives an estimation. Of course, you know, things are only based upon what the actual expenses were made. So if they don't spend something, they don't get it back. There will be a reimbursement request made to show all those eligible expenses in accordance with a reimbursement agreement. But it's an estimation based upon the estimated taxes that will be generated, the estimated increment of and how the developer will be paid back, how much they'll be paid back, how much administration will go to the authority, and also then what goes to the LBRF. There is, you'll notice on there, some school tax capture. That's because the law allows for certain activities like your Phase One environmental site assessment and your lead and asbestos investigations, your hazardous building materials, to use school taxes for that without having any other additional approvals. It's statutorily allowed. So you'll see that in there. And I think that that is it. I don't know if you have any questions for either Jackie or I.
I'll ask the members, are there any questions? Clarification or comments?
I do have one question. So with the value that, I've referred to it as getting frozen, right, that we lock it into that value, and then the increment is what gets reimbursed. So is, does that, like using the 2021 value of almost $100,000, does that still go up at all, like with the yearly assessed values would for, say, like homes and other properties? It's just that it doesn't jump to the fully increased and appreciated value after the construction is finished? Or are we actually set at that dollar amount for that period of time?
That's a really good question, because the way you look at that graph that Eagle provided, it makes it looks like it goes up. But I'm not sure that it does. I honestly don't.
That graph is what sparked the question.
Yeah.
Jared, do you have comments on that?
Was your question, if I understood it correctly, asking about the actual true value of the property going up during that period?
No, sorry, can I try to answer? He's asking if the base value that increases over time by, for example, the cost of living or something like that, or that 1%. I don't believe it does.
No, the base is the base. So whatever the value is today is gonna remain. Any inflationary value, that would be considered increment at that point. And so, yeah, the base is the base, whatever the value is set at the time of approval.
It was very confusing because one of the Eagle slides makes it look like it goes up incrementally by a little bit, so.
That was exactly why I had the question, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And I did have one other question.
There it is.
So relative to, like I know the DDA approved or supported the pass-through capture there, it's not that we're actually losing any revenue from it, it's just that they're foregoing the incremental increases. So they're still retaining the base value DDA funding we received from that?
That's corrected. I'll let Jared confirm that, or Jim, if you know. But the DDA, if they're capturing any local taxes right now, they'll continue to capture that because we can only, because under the Brownfield Plan, it's only the increment that gets captured.
Yeah, that's correct. If we, we're not taking any formal steps to remove the property from the DDA's TIF capture. They're just allowing the increment to pass through generated from the project.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Pause. Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I think it was our trustee Holmes that made this, and I'll just bring this up myself, for the investment this developer is making in the area of $2.8 million. And over the lifetime of the TIF, they'll only, you know, as it's forecasted, capture less than $600,000. It's still a big risk on the developer's part. And I feel very comfortable by giving them the support to move ahead with this resolution. So anyone else has, wants to make any comments on it or make a motion of support or of the resolution?
Moved to approve the Brownfield application as submitted.
Trustee Wagner, I support.
Member Keller, motion with support by Member Wagner. We'll take a roll call, please, Mr. Mallory.
Roll call vote. Member DeBruin.
Approved. Is that the proper word?
Support. Support and not support. Go with whoever. Member Merrill.
Support.
Member Reaster.
Support.
Member Keller.
Support.
Member Goss.
Support.
Member Holmes.
Support.
Member Wagner.
Support.
Member Olson.
Support.
Chairperson Frisbee.
Support. Resolution request passes. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your continued investment in this village.
I'd just like to make a comment, too, that from all of the buzz that I've been hearing from people, even outside of Vicksburg, I think that they are going to be very successful.
Mr. Mallory, you have some updates, village updates?
Well, we have a few minutes. If members have questions about anything going on in the village, I'll be happy to answer them. I will let the members know. I'll be reaching out individually just to solicit opinions as we develop the 2223 budget overall for the village, as well as specific to the Brownfield, where we see that going in the next year or so, and specific to Mr. Goss and Mr. DeBruin. A lot of times, I'll just do that by Zoom. But if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Hopefully, everyone's seeing the downtown furniture get put in place, but we'll give a detailed update at the council meeting.
I do have something that I just had questioned in my mind, is that I have noticed that our streets in Vicksburg are in pretty bad shape. And that would be something that I would like to see us maybe work on, and I'm sure you are doing that. But I've really noticed, it seems like this winter has really taken its toll on all of our current, just in the village streets. And of course, we've had to traverse around and back, and the trucks have been going all over the place. So I'm hoping that that's something that you're looking at.
Oh, yes.
No other questions for staff?
On that, just for knowledge, we have just shot at 22 miles of asphalt roadway in the village, and we have funding to possibly do three-quarters of one mile.
I think it's back to the budget. And you, and right, that comment is from the state, right, through Act 51? All right. So that's the support we get from the state.
Steve?
Yeah, I can just ask a question about, just out of curiosity. Is some of the road funding, is that dependent on the gas tax?
There's both statutory minimums that come into play through that, and then there's discretionary funds within each of the budgets that are set up, so.
So it seems like there's been some legislative activity to suspend the gas tax. Would that have a...
It potentially could. State shared revenue is what I'm actually thinking of that has a little minimum through legislative. An Act 51 money, both in major roads and local roads, has been fairly consistent the past six years, and they're going up about 1% each year, which this year, we know inflation alone is 7% plus. Asphalt plant locally didn't even make cold patch because of the expense that it would be to make, and it's getting pretty close to the cost of concrete.
You did put in the budget, as I do recall seeing it when we approved. You have streets identified already earmarked for repairs, right?
The budget that we're in has streets left to be completed. We did, in this fiscal year, we did all of Prairie Street going out to the west village limit.
We also, there'll be multiple streets, small sections of streets completed near the downtown, like Washington between Main and Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo between Washington and Prairie, Main Street between Washington and South, that is still out of this fiscal year. And we anticipate late April, early May, once the asphalt plant gets going, we're on the, in conjunction with this project finishing, those roadways would be done. As I sit now, with the cost that we're looking at, we're getting estimates for chip sealing a couple major roads to get them to last longer. We do not anticipate presenting any roadway for milling and re-asphalt right now for 2223.
Any other questions for staff? Well, that puts us at member comments. I'm not gonna go through each one of us, but if you have a comment you'd like to make, please feel free just to state your name and make that comment.
I do have one question. Originally, Jared and I talked that he, since he was here answering the questions of, and we do have a full council in front of us as well, would it be all right, would you like him to stay for the council meeting, or is it all right to excuse?
I would agree. I see Carl shaking his head. No, I think he's been more than clear with us, and we're up to speed on probably any question that would come up. So I would say no. All those in favor of him not staying around, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jared. Just think of us. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jared.
You as well. Thank you.
And thanks for asking that, Jim. And with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Reaster, support.
Moved to support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, meeting adjourned. in-person meeting. It's Monday, March 21, 2022. Just a reminder, we're running this on Zoom webinar link and also through the YouTube. You can watch it there live. There is directions, and if you have any questions, Mr. Mallory can direct you as to how to get it. But if you go to the vicksburgmi.org, there are links on the front homepage as to assist you to get on. So with that, I'll call this meeting to order. Tonight, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take a moment of silence and try to remember all those in the world that are fighting for their lives tonight. Mr. Mallory, if you would do roll call when ready, please.
Roll call for the Village Council meeting, March 21, 2022, 7:00 p.m. Trustee Merrill.
Here.
Trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
President Pro temp Keller.
Here.
President Frisbee.
Here. So we have a full house. We have an agenda in front of us tonight. I trust everyone's This is time now for agenda items only for the citizens, if they would like to address through the webinar or...
Right now, no one is, citizen-wise, is logged in through Zoom. We do have four through YouTube, but the citizen comments are through our Zoom link.
All right. While hearing none, we'll move on. We have a consent agenda from our last scheduled meeting, February 21st. We have warrant reports in the amount of $69,432.57. We have event requests, the 35th Annual Hardy Hustle. We have the Historic Village Pavilion Easter Egg Hunt on April 16th. I must back up, the Hardy Hustle is May 14th. And the Lions Club Annual Summer Fest at the Historic Village Pavilion, July 21st to July 23rd. And the Vicksburg Farmers Market, Market on Main Street Event, July 22nd, 2022, from 2:00 PM to 6:00. And we have correspondence from Mr. Steers and they are attached to your agenda this evening. Were there any corrections or?
Yeah, President Frisbee, the minutes for the regular scheduled meeting, it says February 21st, shouldn't that be March 7th?
Yes, you're talking on the, I'm sorry, on the agenda, I jumped over to, we'll make that correction, the minutes are from March 7th.
Mr. President, I move as corrected.
Trustee Wagner, I'll support.
President Protam Keller moved as corrected on the regular scheduled minutes of our past March 7th meeting and Trustee Wagner, support. We'll do a roll call.
Roll call vote, Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
President Protam Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. We have approval of the consent agenda. And we have action items in front of the council tonight. Tonight, the first one is Resolution 03212022-1, Resolution Approving Amendment to the Village of Vicksburg Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Brownfield Plan and Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Development and Reimbursement Agreement for the 101 and 103 Prairie Street Redevelopment Project. So we've all heard quite a bit about this, our last meeting, we went through it. Of course, we sat through on the Brownfield meeting prior to this meeting. We know where this is going and what we want to accomplish, is there some more discussion that the?
Recording in progress.
You missed some of my best talk.
No, it's captured on YouTube and live.
President Frisbee, if I could.
Yes, sir.
As the council member representing us on the Planning Commission, I just wanted to share with fellow trustees that there was a meeting tonight of the Planning Commission DDA and the vote, I believe, village manager was 6-0.
Was unanimous.
Was unanimous.
And one in attendance.
And support. I just wanted to share that with everybody.
In the resolution in front of you, if I can add, was prepared by Jared Belka and his staff, so meets all the legal requirements in that.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
We should make residents be aware that weren't on for the Brownfield meeting, that the money that is, the Brownfield money, it's TIF money, which is money that is the difference between the assessed value of the property now and what it will be over the life of the agreement, so that we, the village is not kicking in Brownfield money for this project. It's money that they will gain from the improvements they're going to be doing on the property. In addition, we will still be getting Brownfield money off the property as we have been getting. So this is not, this is no lose situation for the village and actually, they're investing $2.8 million into this property and the money they're going to get back is, I think, around $600,000 from the improvements, I think, roughly over the life of it. I think was what it was, I think the number was thrown out, or maybe $400,000, but it's still, it's a heck of an investment by the property owners, so I just want to make sure the citizens are aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Anyone have any other comments of clarity for those that are just tuning in right now? If I may say, this is, this plan is over a 25-year period, it doesn't start for the next five years until 2027. So I think it'll be on past me in my tenure of the council to see, you know, the end result of that investment and the taxable income, but you know, everything that we do here is for the future of this village and I think we're setting it up to come out on top, you know, for the next generation. I have to say thank you to, you know, Trustee Keller said, you know, that it's a substantial investment that this developer is making and the return on that is, well, as I said earlier, I'm a numbers guy, but this one's slipping me, but it's far short of their investment at, you know, just under $600,000 over the life of that TIF fund, so it's a big step forward for the community. I think it's an all-around win for everyone involved, so. Any other comments of the trustees? Well, with that, we have a resolution in front of us, seeking our approval. I just ask the council, what is their desire?
This is Trustee Wagner. I move that we approve Resolution 03212022-01, the Resolution Approving Amendment to the Village of Vicksburg Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Brownfield Plan and Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Development and Reimbursement Agreement for the 101 and 103 Prairie Street Redevelopment Project.
Holmes, I second.
Motion by Trustee Wagner and second by Trustee Holmes. We'll do a roll call, please.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Protam Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Motion carries resolution, it'll be approved. Thank you.
Very exciting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your investment.
We have another agenda item in front of us for the Village of Vicksburg Waiver and Release of Liability Agreement through our rental programs. Jim and legal staff have come up with the wording on this, I trust everyone's had an opportunity to read it, and I think it's pretty, pretty simple, but it covers the village and all involved for many major liabilities.
Yeah, with as much as increase have we seen rental of the pavilion, obvious words getting out of what equate of value that is, and talking to legal staff, we felt to have a specific waiver and release liability agreement, and this is, we will go back, anyone who has reserved through the summer of '22, we will go back and this will be a requirement that they sign as well, as if they're leasing it. On April 18th, we anticipate as well, putting different items in front of the council that will also include the potential requirement for, depending upon the event held there, that they have to demonstrate they have liability insurance that would ensure covering for the village, but that'll be covered, I believe, April 18th. Tonight is just the liability agreement, so we can start the process of getting the people to sign that.
Jim, if I could. Sir. Jim, I just wanted to comment on the document. First off, it's very well-written. Someone who works with contracts all day and with attorneys, just for the public, when you read this, yeah, it's necessary, and the reason why it is, is because of litigious nature, which we all live within today. Just a few years ago, we all would think that there's no reason why we just simply can't access some village property and use it, we're all citizens. Unfortunately, I recently found out, if someone walks across my yard and gets hurt, they can sue me for trespassing on my property. So that's the reality of the world that we live in, and so unfortunately, this is what the village needs in order to properly maintain and protect the village from any such lawsuit, so it's unfortunate, but I think it's warranted.
Any further comments or questions of staff? If not, we'd entertain a motion.
Trustee Holmes, I make a motion that we pass the waiver and release liability agreement.
Trustee Wagner, I'll support.
Trustee Holmes, motion of support of the new liability agreement, Trustee Wagner, support. We'll do a roll call, please.
Roll call, Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Protam Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Next action item in front of us is a letter of support for the City of Portage and support for the City of Portage Sanitary Sewer Trunk Line Assessment, ARPA application. Jim, elaborate on that a bit, please.
The City of Portage has initiated a process in which to evaluate their sewer trunk lines, the conditions that the trunk lines are in, similar to what we did with the SAW grant a few years ago and came up with a kind of a CIP list of what would be anticipated. And they are going to request Kalamazoo County to use some of the countywide federal dollars that we received to offset that cost of evaluating those trunk lines. How it impacts the Village of Vicksburg, we share one of those truck lines with them, so it would help offset any cost that we would receive within that process and evaluation. So staff has recommended a letter of support.
I have a question about that. So you are saying it's not going to be something that is going to be passed on to each individual homeowner, that this is going to come out of a fund from the state?
No, the federal dollars through our, was given to the county and I think it's $51 or $53 million.
Okay.
So the City of Portage is, which in those funds can be used for infrastructure, so they're requesting the county to appropriate, make an appropriation of the county, you know, the money that came federally that the counties overseen to be used to evaluate, camera those pipes, do a complete evaluation of those trunk lines. Without that, and the City of Portage will need to do that evaluation, we would bear some of that cost at the percentage level that we have capacity within that pipe.
Okay, thank you.
So, Jim, this is an opportunity to ease our potential burden financially on Portage's improvement of their own infrastructure that we share.
Correct. And I believe, I know it's in excess, 10 different municipalities pass through the Portage system, so it's not just a Vicksburg, it's multiple communities' transport product through their system to Kalamazoo.
Jim, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but I ask out of ignorance, ARPA, is that part of the American Recovery Plan?
Yeah, from the federal government, so the state got, received money, the county received money, we received about $400,000, well, we've received $180,000 some thousand so far, and before the end of either this year or next year, we received the second half, so. Like I said, I think it's $51 or $53 million the county received.
So these requests go through a similar process as funding requests come through us, so the city is going to request of the county in front of the county?
Correct. They'll go in front, correct. And similar to what we requested letters of support on some availability of federal money and received those, that support from City of Portage, City of Kalamazoo Road Commission, among, I'm trying to think if there were other entities, so it's bolstering their case, if you will, that this is how many municipalities are impacted and how many municipalities could potentially save from coming out of our own sewer fund to pay for this.
Any other questions or comments?
Still have a question.
Sure.
Okay. In the communication that I got, it says, "The village recognizes the importance of the condition assessment of the trunk line and our obligation to pay our share. However, the fees passed on may cause an undue financial burden to our community and wastewater customers." Explain that to me, please.
In our, we evaluate the utility rates that our residents and businesses pay based on recommendations from outside consultants we use, who are experts in that. Baker Tilly is the company that we use, and those evaluations did not include this substantial investment that Portage is making to evaluate their system. So depending on that funding, it could ultimately impact our residents and businesses because we would be obligated to pay it, and out of your sewer and water funds, those are enterprise funds, so we have to demonstrate that our revenue or our charges to the citizens will pay all of our bills. So that's a longer explanation that basically if these county funds are not used and the full cost of that investment is passed on to the Village of Vicksburg, it will certainly impact our utility rates.
Okay, thank you.
The cost to do Vicksburg under the SAW grant was $1 million.
Jim, just to make clear, so it's clear, we would be responsible for a portion of what they're charged, just as you said, eight or 10 other entities are involved as well, so.
We have in our agreement with City of Portage, we have a percentile that we're responsible for because that's pretty much equal, I believe, to the percentile of capacity we're using within their system. So that's, in the last six years, they had one of their lift stations need unanticipated maintenance and repairs, that our percentage, and I don't want to guide and report back to the council what that is, but I know the bill was about $24,000, but it was, you know, so it would impact us.
Right. Where I was going with this is just so, you threw out the million-dollar number, just so the residents, if it ran $5 million for them to do this and they don't, if they don't receive any funds from the county fund that they have, we wouldn't be responsible with the $5 million bill, but we would be responsible for a percentage.
Our percentage of capacity.
I'm just making sure everybody's aware of that, so that they don't get numbers confused, so.
Well, Jim's got a letter in front of us, if there was any other questions or comments, a letter of support to the city to make their presentation and their case to the council. a letter of support to the city to make their presentation and their case to the county to use some of their ARPA funds to cover the cost of this line assessment.
If I could, I just would like to point out, we all know the sensitivity of, of water and sewer rates in the village, but I, I think it's, it's fair to say, this is, this is the reality, folks, and that is that we're, we're part of a system, we, it's, it's part of a large cost structure and the way that it's managed. And to be candid with you, the development of a letter like this shows me that there's good stewardship that's going on within, you know, down in the villages, you know, that to make sure that we're doing the right things to manage that for the people of this community. So that, I guess the point I would just like to make is that on, on the surface, this looks like, you know, a, a letter of acknowledgement and support, but from my perspective, quite candidly, what it shows is really good stewardship and the commitment of this council and staff, you know, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to manage water and sewer rates in this community.
Thank you, Rick, well said. No further questions, entertain a motion of support?
Holmes, I support.
Reister, support.
Kind of got that backwards, didn't I go?
Yeah.
I guess I'm not supporting. I'd like to make the motion.
Trustee Holmes, motions of support? Trustee Reister, seconds? We can just do a roll call?
Sure.
All those in favor of support? Excuse me, voice call. He knew what I meant. All those in favor of the resolution of support, the aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And thank you, Jim, for looking ahead. And Jim's got to talk about, a little bit about the village clerk position. I'll let him start it off and we'll...
Yeah, we, kind of bittersweet news, not for, for us as a staff or the village, but certainly for Denise Harold as an individual. She has made a, the decision that it's time to retire. So Alex and I both told her that we give her a week, but maybe just us, but we're wishing her well in that retirement. It's effective March thirty-first. And when Denise got ahold of me, which was probably two and a half, three weeks ago, there were a couple check item boxes we had to make sure, or she had to confirm, so I was holding up, but it, it really, I started to look at the, the staffing of the office and, and met individually with people in the office, and then collectively, we as a group talked a week later as well. And just kind of to, you know, not have any canned thoughts of how, how could we most efficiently staff a village that is growing in the manner that we are, knowing what we're juggling right now? And after taking a lot of input and, and looking at other communities and charting out the future, I approached President Frisbee, and I think from there he can, whether it was a human resource, but it's certainly time the village to move to a full-time village clerk. And then within that staffing, instead of having a, an additional, what has historically been titled a utility clerk, we felt that to go with two part-time positions with staffing availability right now in our area, we felt that it would be easier to, to locate those individuals, as well as when someone is on vacation within the village currently, and it's just the way it's set up, so it's, but if one person within the financial matrix is gone, it, like if Denise is on vacation, all of a sudden, Michelle predominantly is now taking walk-ins, front office staff, and I, the work of the treasurer is still remaining for her when available time. And, and it's a trickle-down effect then. So we, it is, I answer, I put the financials in there, and the financials are in a comparative, comparable analysis with, with other communities. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, we're, we're looking forward to and asking for the support of this. We think it'll propel us into, to being able to maybe handle more.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Jim, I appreciate those comments, it helped me fill in some gaps that I was bringing to this. So I just kind of want to make sure that I understand, so today, we do not have a, a village clerk position filled, correct?
Correct.
And what we're looking at doing would be then the hiring of, of, of the new person would be to fill that position, but with Denise retiring, instead of hiring a utility clerk, we're looking at breaking that up into two part-timers, is that?
Yeah, so, so maybe on a, a traditional, like pyramid matrix, so we really don't operate that way. It'd be the village clerk would, would be on the side of the financials for accounts payable, which includes the utility billing. And we, and then of course, minutes, and, and more importantly, the storage of, of informational technology that really is the next internal project that has to be tackled. The customer service people would be at the counter, certainly we would put in place training and mechanism so they learn the BSNA system, answer questions and that. Diane would, would be what she was hired to do, an accounts payable person. And I also believe in the midterm, and I'm saying the, the five to ten-year range, you can start to develop a staff for transitional periods, hopefully giving them the skillset to, to acquire the knowledge to, to gain more responsibility.
Would, do you foresee then the impact on the staff payroll? Would it be neutral then?
No, it's, there's going to be with, you know, there would be an increase that when we get to it in May, I'd have down to the percentage level. So I believe you're looking and at, one, you're talking about a seven percent right now inflationary rate, you're seeing municipalities, but the most minimum I've seen is two-seven-five, but even going up on, on compensation and then benefit cost increases are going to get transferred in.
Right.
I would anticipate payroll would be twelve to fifteen percent higher, would be an anticipated on this investment.
But as you all may remember, and, and Jim and I know this conversation has gone back several years, the need for a clerk in our community has just been driving this whole thing. We've had these conversations in the open, we've had them in private, that we needed to get to that point, we're, we're becoming a community that just, we need a clerk. And having a shared resource for the front desk is necessary, you know, for recovery on illnesses and vacations. So, you know, Jim's come up with his plan, I think it's, it's a very workable plan, and it's, you know, who knows in a couple more years what that'll look like too, it may even grow from that, but.
Yeah, and, you know, a couple other responsibilities trustee Holmes, this person would, would acquire over time, is the zoning, the, it's, I, I am not exaggerating, I feel two or three legitimate inquiries a week now on people looking to invest in Vicksburg one way or another. So that's an area I see in the future that we have to be able to handle more internally, those questions. And, and it was, it's taken about two weeks, how much, I've realized I miss Bobby Durkey already.
You, oh, I'm sorry, just, just a follow-up, I, it's, it's interesting you say that, Jim, because the one thing that I think that would, if we again continue to project where the village is going, and we're all optimistic and positive where we're going, would be this, this individual that we're looking at hiring and bringing on, with his background, it'd be interesting to see if that person could evolve into a director of economic development, someone in a role, because what you're, sorry about that, what, the idea of, of looking at the community from that lens, that perspective, zoning, you know, opportunities, you know, working with you and things like that, it would be, it would be really interesting to see that evolution of, into that type of, of title.
I have, I have no doubt we're talking about someone who, who's worked on, on our team for an excess of two years, any responsibility I've given him has excelled. One of the encouraging things that, that my experience is, doesn't come to me for the solution to everything, every problem, goes, takes it to a completed level until might have to ask. So again, I, that's the most, for me, comforting thing. I have, up until this point, we, we've put together a staff that's on their second or third career, that have a lot of contacts, and we can call in favors and that type of stuff. But I think this will begin the process to develop the next generational leader in Vicksburg. So we're kind of looking forward to that opportunity as well.
And no disrespect to staff in those comments, I was just saying that, looking forward down the road.
No, you guys have experienced it, I mean, I, I know this meeting's recorded on YouTube and everything else, you know, it's not every week, but there, I didn't anticipate this gig in Vicksburg being a seventy, seventy-five hour gig. And minimally, I'm over fifty hours, and I'm not looking at big reduction, but, you know, there isn't a day that I'm not working for Vicksburg. And, and there's comparable communities with double the size of office space, office staff, I should say, probably space too, but staff more importantly, so.
And Jim, when you make the twelve to fifteen percent expected increase on payroll, is that also accounting for our resignation from Director Durkey and planning?
Yeah, you're talking very minimal, what Bobby was doing a huge favor, Bobby and I go back quite a number of years. So I think probably as yearly, it might have been five grand, so it's negligible. And as soon as you said twelve or fifteen percent, I'll have that number to, to the dollar come May, I'm hoping it's there. In dollar amounts, I can tell you expenses will be well under revenues again, I know that.
Well, we identified the need for a clerk, I believe we have identified a candidate, and, and it revolves around secession planning, and we all do that in our day jobs, and it's most important here that, this is not a guarantee, right, that this individual will move into a, a future role, but it is our desire to get somebody that's capable of doing that, and capable of taking on these roles that Jim talks about, zoning, clerical, audio, video. So with that, I had the pleasure, I have the responsibility to nominate a village clerk. And the HR committee took a couple hours out of their day last weekend to interview the candidate. I believe he comes away with excellent reviews, and with that, I officially make a nomination of, maybe a new village clerk of Christian Wines. Christian's got a history with us, he worked with the village from 2017 to 2021 in numerous capacities, all, all the responsibilities he took on and excelled at. He's got a bachelor's degree in political science from Western Michigan University. And if any of the other HR would like to, to speak in support, or?
Yeah, I will. I, I was really excited about Christian because one of the main reasons is that he already knows about the running of the office, he's worked in that office. So it's going to be somebody stepping in who's qualified, but also is well aware of how the office runs. And so I think it's, it's an excellent opportunity, he's a young man, and so he's just getting started, and I think that will be very good too, because we need some young blood here. So I'm looking forward, he's a very personable person, he, he meets well with everybody, he handles things beautifully, so I'm very excited about hopefully having him in staff.
I'd just like to ask a question of the Human Resources Committee, and that is, as it relates to looking at the compensation for this role, where was that identified from? Is it the individual, what the individual brings, as what I've heard the village manager talk about before with staff, we're paying people commensurate with what they bring to the table, or is this just an established number for the title?
Well, if I can answer that, because I supplied some of the data to them that probably didn't go into the detail that you asked, it's, it's multi-pronged. One, the talent, the market, and, and at what, right now, what we listed out was a starting, starting wage, and then six months upon satisfactory completion, the evaluation a little bit of a bump up, and due to the timing, then it would just be in the regular schedule of a fiscal year from that point forward. But it's, what we're seeing, and we'll get into this more on other positions, but specific to the clerk position, yes, it's the fact he has a bachelor's, the fact we know his integrity levels, commitment, he's worked since graduation at Western for the state of Michigan, and the potential. And we don't want to bring someone in that two years from now moves to the next opportunity, if you will, and I'm, I'm confident that that won't happen. But, and we'll go into more detail come May, but you'll see a recommendation of a substantial investment to our DPW staff. And the reality is, we're, we're, we're paying an hourly wage that if it was solely money, there would be a lot more opportunities for them in those areas, and we'll go into more detail on that. So I think as we move into this budget season, this is going to be, it's just interesting times of the last eighteen months, and, and it's going to be important for the village to hold staff, I believe. But I don't ask, ask questions specific to the clerk, I don't know if I answered fully your question, but those were the, how I arrived at the starting figure. It is a little bump from what he is making right now, and as we do with most employees coming in the office, he'll start with a balance of PTO hours that are equal to vacation-type time, but.
Jim, I've always been different to you as it relates to your staff, you have, you have, you have a great team. And the only thing, the one thing that I'm looking at right now is simply, to your point, the times we live in. And not only as it relates to, you know, hiring the right talent, retaining the right talent, but I would say also what the needs are of the community, we just talked about, you know, one aspect of the budget roads and, and what we're challenged there. So, I, I mean, that, that's how I'm looking at this, is simply, you know, it's... So I I mean, that that's how I'm looking at this is simply, you know, it's. You know, again, it's just, I think it's the challenge of realizing, you know, many people don't realize, you know, how large the responsibility is that you have, and so that's why. Again, I've been very deferent to to staff and and how you maintain that, I I don't. I I don't have an issue whatsoever in the individual you're hiring or or the compensation for the most part. I I need to take a deep breath as it relates to the the two new part-time people because. Again, we're looking at, you know, between forty-eight and fifty-four thousand, you know, new to the budget. And we're already talking about, you know, additional increases that are coming with staff to retain them, so. Yeah, that's where that's where I sit on this right now, so.
Yeah, I think the the ROI on the positions, it's tough to quantify, um you people, you know, see. If you will, the response of DPW and and short staff. Uh they don't see what goes on in behind the walls of village hall, and I think the financial committee. Um sees some of the labor um that and I I usually don't. I try and choose my words because I usually don't um. I usually spend time at council meetings and I think exclusively probably a hundred percent over six years talking about. Uh the the team and and their performance and in my debt of gratitude. Uh Michelle Morgan's on this call right now, she's on vacation in Arizona. I don't know how many of you participate in your companies when you're on vacation in Arizona, but our treasurer does. I can rely on our staff uh and ask pretty much anything and and they respond. Um I I I don't. I I think the village is in for a rude awakening in the future. In that we have to start to prepare. And I need to do probably a better job at what goes on and the time and effort. Um of everything that's handled in the village and the commitment. And as we go into to May, as we talk, I'll probably do a matrix of other communities of similar size and how they are staffed. Um I'm at. Um it again. Alex, it doesn't matter who I call, but we're spending Saturdays and Sundays. To ensure this village gets the gets the best return, not on your investment in us. But if we have a developer call, we stop what we're doing and and answer that to to highlight the village. So I'll I what what I will do is is do that matrix when we look at those positions in in May. And I'm I am confident in a couple things. I've never overasked, and I appreciate the support the council has always provided. And when we looked at this, we I didn't struggle with with the numbers because I knew where they would be. It's okay, what what is going to be the return for the village on this? And really, for me, the return is to be able to have someone on staff with the desire to truly learn small local government. And us have the patience to to train and expose that person and and meet. If you will, the next generations of all these other municipalities and put it in 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 a position where they're networked well enough into the future that. That the village is going to be in good hands. That overwhelming was my return on the the investment now, the 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 salary is is right in line with with. Um the a starting clerk in municipalities our size that. Um some of the selling points for us, you know, we still offer a good benefit package. And and we can, working for the state of Michigan, uh there's a lot of opportunities of growth and added responsibility there. But I think, and I wasn't present when the Human Resource Committee, they can comment on it, but I know in my talks with them. His energy and passion for the village shines, so.
You know, right now, we're we're just talking about the um, you know, my appointment, my nomination, I'd like your support for uh Mr. Wine's. You know, the funding part of it, you know, we can we can deal with as the budget arises for the multiple uh. Shared chefs, whether it be, it's the forward. Part of our community, the people, the residents, the taxpayers have a fallen tree, have a pothole. They want to talk to somebody in the village, we owe it to them to be there in front of them all the time and have good, consistent answers. And I think, you know, increasing that staffing level will will put us there. We we've been very fortunate, as Jim said, the last couple of years, fortunate, that's poorly termed with COVID, but. We've we've closed down our businesses, closed down our offices and went remote, well, that's that's coming back. And we have to be in a position to support our residents and ask her the questions and have a, you know, a smiling face and that is knowledgeable in front of them. Uh and it's very difficult to do when you're working part, have a one part-time person and covering them, and so I I think it's inevitable, we we have to be there. From a financial standpoint, in my opinion, on that clerk position is and and Christian. Don't come at me for a raise, but I think it's cheap uh in that sense, you know, what I have to pay my staff uh today to do my business. Um I think we're getting a young individual that's very passionate about this community, passionate about growth and learning. And he's gonna, you know, jump right in there on day one and make an impact. And as I talk succession planning, you know, groom him for things down the road that he may be interested in or. And hopefully within our our own community, so.
Well, um because I know Denise Harold very well, she has had nothing but positive things to say about Christian and working with him. Because she worked with him for quite a long time and said that he was a very quick study um and would. Fill this position very well, she was very excited about it, so um she's worked with him, she thinks he's going to do a really good job.
Uh Jim and Tim, if I could.
Sure.
Uh would we have an opportunity, so thinking about future uh growth, development, networking and things like that. Uh and and discussing compensation as well, do we have an ability to benchmark or um set in some incentive goals for raises for things like getting the CMC? CMC level two or three, um those like clerk professional designations and certifications for adding that depth of skill to the position in the role, I mean. Is that something we can we could look at doing to, I'm I'm sure he seems like a a person who's very well um assertive in in that growth and development to add a little extra carrot.
You if you're asking about the increased compensation to, you certainly can, but you do realize each of those programs are. Thousands and thousands of dollars to to send to as well.
And and I think to your point, Jim, the ROI, right, if we get a a better skilled, better involved and and eager clerk, I mean, those are things I'd certainly entertain. If we're really adding that depth of skill to that position.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Mallory?
Uh just one more for myself, sorry, uh so in in the same vein that we're all encouraged here at the council to attend MML courses. Uh skill workshops and things like that to make ourselves better elected officials. You know, I'm I'm fully supportive of adding that type of incentive or pay increase or thing like that to the package if we could.
I can develop that, we send people without the incentives, so each year, Michelle and I attend. She uh goes to the week-long treasurers, members of the Treasurers Association for the state and the county. Uh I'm with the Michigan Municipal Executives. But yeah, we can, we can look at an incentive program. But I I mean, we're, he'll get exposure to to training, how to be the best clerk anywhere into those formal training sessions. I uh um. I'm not an advocate to put a bunch of letters behind the name, my card doesn't have all of my degrees I have. So I'm I'm a person that more is, you know, we're we're gonna teach them about government, like. We're very confident who we can expose them to and learn from and send them to those schools. So I just looked, I mean, there's a seven thousand dollar clerk school that I wouldn't send anyone to because I don't think that seven thousand dollars is worth. What the individual gets back from it.
And Jim, that's the kind of feedback that I appreciate, so thank you very much.
Yeah, not to rain on your parade, because I'm I'm a big advocate of um, you know, financial incentives. But what I know of this individual, that he'll he'll want to do that and uh, you know, just, but you certainly can talk about it. You know, that's a great idea, there's there's been other, I think incentives uh applied to other individuals to to get them to elevate their their knowledge base, but. I think this will just, it'll go from sheer desire on this individual's part, but certainly something to keep in the back of our minds and entertain that.
Yeah, I think I want to make sure trustee Wagner's clear, I think you and I are on the same page, the training and and schooling. Is certainly gonna happen, um it might be a reverse role where I'm, I don't right now um. Comfortable with the incentivizing it. The happiness of the office is. So I think with the training, I'm I would I don't want to leave you with the impression I'm not for that, I'm all for that.
You know, I'm just, I I think kind of from that lens and I'm just, I'm glad to see the interest and dedication on all levels here to get. Every bit of talent into that individual that we can and to see that return for the village, that's through any tool and means necessary, so.
President Frisbee.
Sure.
Um I'm just wanted want the council to know that, you know, we had a clerk at one time. Few years ago, and we we've been without a clerk for a period of time now, um Jim's been acting clerk. Um and also remind everybody that this isn't gonna be the last time that whether it's. Jim Mallory's manager or somebody else coming to to this council, whether it's us or or other people here, looking to add staff. Because the reality is this village, if if it goes where we all want it to go, is is gonna develop. Into a bigger entity that's gonna require more staff to manage the village, so I'm just making everybody aware of that, I. You know, I understand hiring new people can be a little spooky, I guess, but um we will be. Down the road, having to add more staff just to just to compensate or to to fully cover to manage, you know, this village, so.
Trustee Keller, if I could, um as a follow-up to that comment, the the one thing I'm really looking forward to is when Mr. Mallory brings us that map you were talking about, Jim, because. You know, again, we're guys, we're talking about, we're talking about double-digit numbers and growth here, this isn't to be taken lightly, which I don't think we are, which is why. I'm I'm asking the questions that I'm asking, I I think the clerk position is definitely needed, it's there. Um you know, and but I think just just to say that we're gonna grow the government because we're gonna be something, let's wait until we get there. And then make that decision then, I mean, this position, I I have no problem because to your point, you know, Carl, it it, you know, it's it's needed. Um but again, let's 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 not put the carriage before the horse here, let's let's. Hire the positions when they're needed, Mr. Mallory laid a case for the fact that we need this position as well as some additional support. And I think then based upon that, um we'll make our decision. My personal decision is is that I I realize this isn't what we're talking about, but the temporary positions I would have a hard time supporting tonight. Because I would rather wait to see in May what it looks like, what we're gonna look like before we start putting additional staff in place.
Well, your point's well taken, I think if we were to ask Mr. Lee before he retires from his retired job. How many questions and and that he feels during a day that is really a front desk type individual? I think if we were to put it in writing, I think you all would be extremely amazed about the amount of effort that goes in with Alex Lee and Jim Mallory, day to day. Uh I my personal opinion is we're there, we I don't, we need to see the numbers financially as fine, but from a need standpoint, we're already there.
President Frisbee, real quick and not, and I don't mean this to be a back and forth between council members. Um I'm not looking to grow government, that was not my intent, my 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 intent on my statement was to make everyone aware that. When I say staff, I mean DPW, uh public safety, you know, that's what I mean, the and you know, this. Local government affects your neighbor immediately on services. Where when you're talking state and federal government, that's a whole nother issue. But when you hire an individual as a staff member, whether it's whether it's uh in village hall or it's a DPW person. The village feels that impact immediately, same with the public ser- you know, public safety officer. Um that's what I was talking about, is that is down the road, we're we're gonna be asked to increase potentially either public safety or DPW, so I'm just. Making everyone aware, this is this is what happens when a village is vibrant and growing, is that you need more people to manage the operations.
If if I can, because uh because I think it's a great conversation. Um which is my opportunity to be in front of all of you together and and here, because I think um listening to Mr. Holmes, I think a a key data point too that I'll be sure. To to put in front is the growth of revenue versus the expense line, like over the past five years, and then I can project it out. Where those lines are trending in that, so I I I I simply take that Mr. Holmes is more comfortable once he sees more data. And I have no problem with that, I'm comfortable where the data will be, and I give you the whole council my word, I'll get that to you. On the scheduling, you brought up the uh what were titled, uh the two part-time customer service reps. Internally, the the timing of those is we were hoping to post those on different um avenues, both indeed, social media, word of mouth. For for uh thirty days to see where the candidates come in at, applicants, if um there's. It would be my hope that we would identify one uh right away to start earlier, we wouldn't want to be training everyone all at once anyway, so I I do. I would like to have one of the customer service reps in position by mid-April, late April at the very latest. Followed by a a couple weeks uh with the second one. Um is is was our timing of of those hires. Um I, yeah, so um. And I and I was planning, uh what I'll do on staffing is I can put that data together. Uh for our next meeting is April eighteenth, because we we don't, we we added one, so I think it's the eighteenth and twenty-fifth, if I remember right, in April. So one of those meetings, I can come with the data, the of the revenue line historically and projecting as well as the expense. As well as a comparative community, our size staffing levels, that won't be a problem, and then as long as we can save the the. Um uh twenty-two, twenty-three. Benefit compensation till May um on those, but you'll have the baseline of this year we're in. I just, I'm waiting, I won't get benefits until late April at the earliest, because every year it's a scramble to see how that's gonna impact it.
I I sincerely appreciate that, everything you said right there just went right to the heart of the matter for me, because. You know, when we're sitting here and we're projecting out, you know, what our cost structure is gonna look like. Um you know, that's the one thing that, you know, to to President Frisbee's point he made earlier, he's a data guy, he you know, he's a numbers guy, he likes to see. Those numbers and, you know, when we're talking figuratively about, you know, the you know, the expense growth within the village. For me, there would be a sense of, I I think, an appreciation for knowing what those are. The thing is, Jim, is I respect you because you've always provided information when we've asked for it, so if we are. it. So, if we are going to vote on both, or our three positions tonight, I'll support both of your positions if you will provide that information.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? Well, first, I have to make a nomination of village clerk. We make the position offer to Christian Wines, and I'd like, I ask of you for your support in that.
Just to clarify, are we looking for a nomination, or you're making the nomination and we're seeking support?
You're seeking, I'm making a nomination and seeking your support of that.
Trustee Wagner will support that nomination.
Do we have a second?
Reister, support. Second, whatever.
Support. Motion made by trustee Wagner, support by trustee Reister. We better do a voice call.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
President Protem Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. And we also have a request in front of us for the part-time positions. And this would be contingent on getting the information as requested by trustee Holmes. Can we put a contingency on it or just?
If trustee Holmes is comfortable, would I really like to have, to get the support in his posting these positions to be filled, I don't, I...
I didn't make a, I didn't make a motion to put a contingency on it, so, from my perspective, I'm not asking for a contingency. I respect the village manager and I, and I know that he'll get the information to us. And so, I withdraw my concern and I...
Yeah, I'll probably, I mean, I'll send it to the individual council members, but by the end of the week, I can send the revenue expense. I have that. The staffing, I'm going to rely on me contacting the other municipalities to confirm the MML data is accurate. So, that, the revenue and expense, and I can, I can break those down. You'll, put this way, when you get the Excel spreadsheet, and I'll have a summary with it. If you have questions, call me. Because I'll, they'll be broken down by fund, by trend lines and that, so.
Would that entertain a motion of support?
Trustee Keller, so moved.
I think it's a point, and I don't mean to interrupt, but something we've forgotten, I don't, is, just like all the recent positions, those customer service rep positions will have a council member on those interview teams like we've had, had before.
Reister will support.
Motion by President Protem Keller, support by trustee Reister. Do a roll call, please, Jim.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Protem Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all. I know, I appreciate that. It was a great, great discussion and...
President Frisbee, if I could, I just, I want to, I want to thank village manager Mallory, but also the discussion we had here. This is the type of discussion that I think the people would expect when we're, we're looking at issues like this. And so, I want to, I just want to, you know, congratulate all of you, and I mean that sincerely. I think it was, it was nice conversations. Thank you.
We're just being good stewards. I totally agree with that. And Mr. Holmes, you know, your comments are very well taken, and I think we all take that to heart. And sometimes, you know, it's good to have another look, you know, another voice. So, it isn't good. Somebody we just recently met, were talking about our meetings and how long the village took for meetings, and they're like 20 minutes and they're out. And I said, "You guys are ridiculous in your meetings," but we're doing what we are, has to do, is debate, deliberate, and, you know, come up with a best plan for the taxpaying residents, so.
We're the best 30 bucks you can buy in this country.
Thirty-five.
You got 35?
I didn't even know I was going to get paid.
I'm sorry I started that. Didn't even have to readdress the budget. All right, so, those are done. And so, it just takes us to our village manager report, construction of project updates.
Yeah, the infrastructure, as you've seen, has turned on, what, Mill Street, kind of heading to mid-block. We should be done with the sewer. Then it'll go back to Michigan and start the water improvements. To clarify, and I think it was trustee Reister who asked at the last meeting, that the lead issue will be addressed on Washington because the main is being changed. One difference in last Tuesday with this decision was made, we are not going to do it on Mill Street because the main, which would be a couple hundred thousand dollars, is not being replaced. And if we replaced from that old main, which is 1935, which hasn't caused any issues for the village, and we put new leads on it, when a new main was put in, everything we put in would have to be replaced anyway. So, a decision was made not to make that investment at this time, so, but...
Thank you.
With that, too, hopefully you've seen Oswalt Park. We're staked out and formed up the pour for what will be the fireplace. I just, I tip my hat to Mike Frederick and his crew. I get these daily updates in great detail. I absolutely love it. And that is on schedule. It's just inside, I'm counting for it to be hopefully done, May 20th, May 27th timeframe, so hopefully we don't find anything. But the big news, and we've received just a ton of unsolicited positive comments, the furniture is going in downtown, being permanently affixed. You should see Prairie Street tomorrow get permanently affixed. We've worked with almost every business that had furniture going in front of it on the plan to ensure it meets their expectations and in that. So, the big section of furniture should come in the last week of April, I'm told. And that's the tables with a fixed seating. Three of them will be in front of the Hideaway, three on Liberty Lane East and two on Liberty Lane West. So, and trees in April. And we're on a Monday in April, going to have downtown street swap and the striping put in. And I think, once that striping, again, it'll get the proper angle of cars and that. But we have to remember, it was environmentally designed, that people drove 20 miles an hour in our core downtown, so. That's all moving forward. And again, we meet every Tuesday with the engineers and contractors on that. So, I'll pause there if there's any specific questions to those two projects.
Jim, real quick, has anybody mentioned to you on traffic going from Kalamazoo onto Prairie Street, they'd be going north on Kalamazoo and making the corner there?
Yeah.
I noticed that there are several tire tracks going over the curb.
Yeah, some of the truck drivers probably need to go back to schooling. It's, it meets the parameters, but what we're going to do there is, where you see those tire tracks, that's going to, there's at least one section that's dirt, that was going to be some foliage. It's going to be formed up and we're going to put in reinforced cement. So, the truck drivers, they don't make that turn right. I think one thing that'll help as well is when downtown striped, you'll see where the white lines are put, where people are supposed to stop on Prairie Street or Kalamazoo. You know, they're, they'll be back from the intersection. So, if you can envision a car that's westbound on Prairie Street, that white stripe, where that car's to stop, will be back offset, which will help in those situations as well. But specific to where you saw those tracks, that dirt section's going to be formed up and poured with cement.
I have the same kind of question from that exact same intersection tonight, when I was coming here, because I have to go to Kalamazoo Avenue and then come. I live on the wrong side of the tracks again. But anyway, so, as I'm coming up on Kalamazoo, and I'm going to turn left, this humongous truck, I am not kidding you, humongous is coming this way on Prairie Street. And I'm thinking, should these big trucks be, because, I mean, it really startled me as I was trying to go around the corner, because I had the light. But it was coming, you know, right at me, and I'm thinking, oh, my gosh. So, are these big trucks going to be traveling on that narrow road?
It's engineered and through the engineering software that, yeah, all legalized trucks can, can make it through there. And I think, again, those intersections will be helped with those crosswalks.
Yeah, if he was back, because he was, he came right up to, you know, and I'm going around the corner, and I'm like, oh, my gosh. Wasn't sure if he was going to stop or not, so.
Another, go ahead.
Just like to give a quick kudos to one of the vendors working on the project in Oswalt Park. Oswalt Electric saw them out there today, and then even well after 5:00, there was still an individual onsite, working on the project. So, I think that's really going to help to keep us on time with that, and that goes to demonstrate their commitment to the community. So, thanks to them for that.
Couple other things is, we have, and if we haven't, it'll be this week, we're mailing all of the businesses in the village of Vicksburg. We've created a fill-in-the-blank form to solicit their needs, wants, wishes, desires, and thoughts on the budget. So, we've added that. It'll go to each of the businesses within the village. We've asked for a return date in mid-April. Had Zoom calls with one neighborhood and looking to firm up the four other neighborhoods. I've sent initial emails to them, hoping on Tuesday nights at 7:00 to give citizens. I want to get through a few of those. I anticipate the first Tuesday of May, having a link on the village, and we'll get it out through social media, an open Zoom webinar for citizens to have input wherever they might be in the village, potentially the world, I guess, just to add that component as we develop this budget. One of the things we do know in the budget that's going to be moved forward to next year is the pickleball courts. The anticipated investment on there is about 30,000 more than we originally budgeted. So, it wouldn't be, the construction won't start till after July 1st anyway, so we're just going to push that forward and find that money, because that is certainly, for me, almost the number-one thing that's brought up that individuals want, so. But that's being done, and that's all I have.
I just had a question. When we were working with the DDA back a while ago, we talked about, like, are we getting those cigarette waste things and the pet waste things?
Yes, we are.
Because I went down the lane and there were some mountains of pet waste, and it was just like, come on.
The pet wands are at DBW. They've arrived. And if you see the butt huts, if you will, for cigarettes, depending upon delivery, they'll at minimum be ordered this week through, if you, there's one out in front of Main Street on Prairie. It's going, we're going to buy them all like that through, through a company that we've identified, and we believe they have them in stock. So, we've been debating that look, and we smiled here, because Mr. Lee and I were walking through the village today and said, "There it is," so.
Jim, I did see one of the new trash containers that's as large as I am on the north side of Prairie. Is that the same style that we're going to have throughout the new downtown? It's the two-compartment?
Yes, yeah. They're, yeah, they'll all be affixed. The ones on them, they're all bolted into the cement, so.
Yeah, it might be because it's still in a pallet that I feel it's that big, but it's as big as I am. It's a nice-sized trash can.
It'll take a fork truck to move it.
That's the intent, right?
One more question. Like, in front of Jasper's Pizza in the hardware store, there was that ramping going on, and I thought Alex was going to talk about that a little more. Any kind of drawings of what's being thought of?
No, we've made a decision on that. There's decorative fencing that is part of the project that's going in front of where Kirby's Bakery was, as well as the raised curb by the Dollar General parking lot. We've initiated to purchase additional, the same decorative fencing, and it will be on the raised curb of that because the engineering, it's not to say the additional art-type component can't or won't be done, but our goal is to have that fencing put in here in the next three, three, or then, before May 27th, when the other fencing gets put in. And it will solve the, bringing the attention to that area, so there's, there's no missteps, if you will. So, that'll be the initial, and it's the same exact fencing that's in two different locations on Prairie Street.
Good. Any other questions for Mr. Mallory?
Alex was present when his engineer said he was going to dig up our sidewalk, and my reaction, I said, "That's going to wait."
Well, that takes us to committee reports. Planning Commission, DDA.
President Frisbee, the meeting was last Monday, and unfortunately, I had an excuse absent. I was at a conference in Orlando, so. Mr. Mallory, is there anything?
Yeah, there was a discussion on needs, wants, and wishes, and laying out a timeline for the budget. We, the DDA has a subcommittee that's non-quorum members of that group, specific to the DDA portion of the budget. So, they met this morning for about three hours, going over different needs, wants, and wishes, beginning their conversation. They're having a follow-up meeting. I went today. Alex is going next Monday. And next Monday is going to have representatives from the chamber and other entities to make sure we're not duplicating efforts, or that if we have a common goal, we can maximize what's happening. So, that subcommittee will meet again next Monday, and then they'll report back at the April DDA meeting, which they'll have a full board discussion on needs, wants, and wishes in a conversation. And then, we'll, as staff, take all that data in, as well as these business surveys that we're mailing out. And then, we'll present in May to the Planning Commission, DDA, our recommendations for the 22-23 budget. They'll, after that presentation, they'll get a month to digest it, and that vote will take place in June on the 22-23 fiscal year.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Holmes. I could have updated it, but I got cut off. I think we lost internet in that meeting last week, as I recall. I was watching it, but I couldn't remember what happened, but that's why we...
Did you fall asleep?
Internet. South County Fire.
We had our meeting last Wednesday, and chief's report, they had 118 calls last month. Was informed by the chief that there is a testing system that, that both Brady... Was informed by the chief that there is a testing system that both Brady Schoolcraft Village and Vicksburg Village help pay for. It monthly tests the sirens for the storm warnings. The fire department can activate those from the radios remotely for when there is an issue. But during the storm season, they have monthly testing that it goes through. Evidently, that system is not functioning at all anymore. So they're gonna be looking at, evidently, there's a automated software that can be put on the computer locally that can trigger those every month to go off. He's gonna get more information the next meeting for the fire authority, which then will be brought to, I will bring that information to our board, and so will Brady Township and Schoolcraft Village, because we all pay for those, that testing service. So we're the ones that are affected by that. So I'll have more information hopefully next month. They did pass their new purchasing policy. So they will be getting at least three bids. They also passed policy on credit card use, limiting that. And they are gonna be getting the, I wanna say mirrors, and that's not right. The investment, the investment.
Oh, Cedars?
Cedars, thank you. I had mirrors on my mind. Cedars account, they're gonna be developing that for the fire authority. So there'll be more information next meeting for that. And they are still in the process of looking at new apparatus for the authority. And Chief McMullen has offered to take me on a ride along, which I mentioned to him, that's usually what the mafia does when they wanna get rid of somebody. So he said it'd be during the day, though, not at night. So anyways, that's the report.
South County Sewer is meeting scheduled for tomorrow. So I'll be there and update at the next meeting. Anything shaking on the tree committee?
I did call Mike. I had to leave him a message and told him that you would be interested in coming to our next meeting. So as soon as he sets that up, then we'll get to you and make sure that you can make it. Because I'm looking forward to that. I think we really need a little bit more direction. That's it.
Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec will be meeting this Wednesday, seven o'clock here.
Jim, do we have anybody on the YouTube or the webinar that would like to speak?
The webinar, no. I think we've consistently been at minimum of four. 16 right now on the YouTube. So again, comments come in through Zoom, and that link's right next to it. So.
All right. I'll open this up to the citizens' comments for non-agenda items. Anything our audience would like to discuss? No? Hearing none? All right. We'll go to trustee's time. I'll start with trustee Merrill.
I just noticed that the Hardy Hostel is coming up. And usually, we used to do the village cleanup. And I don't know when the next one is scheduled. But I'm just putting that out there. We have some recliners we wanna throw away.
You're talking about the spring cleaning?
Yeah.
Yeah, the spring cleaning is, it's set, I don't have the date with me, but it's in the newsletter. And once again, it will be as it's been the last couple of years. We do the company staffing. They will not, either one would, they'll put, you know, the containers out and man the container, staff the container, staff with employees would be a better way to phrase it here. And we could look at an option of having that a couple times a year. The other thing we explored was possibly, and I don't know if we have timing to do it now, is to look at a company to hire, and our thought was, you know, for senior citizens, we hire the company that picks up the junk and takes it to the baseball fields for, certainly, it would be prudent village-wide, I don't think on the cost. But we got talk in internal as a staff. But I can't get either company to budge. So.
No, that's a conversation Mr. Mallory and I have had quite a bit. And as have residents have expressed their desire to have that. And it, you know, just the way the economy is, or the employment, or what, they just, they just don't wanna do it. I've talked to some other residents in the village that, you know, they're avid volunteers and community members. And obviously, we can't do it this quickly. But if there's a trash cleanup crew or anybody that would be interested in it, you know, over the next year, if we could come up with a plan to going forward with a volunteering group, whereas we could do that, go out and pick up at people's places. One of the biggest benefits to having it scheduled is you can put it out at the curbside, and 40% of that gets picked up. And we all, I mean, I've been guilty of stopping and picking up old float glass windows and metal scrappers that come through every night. So I understand it's a time-consuming effort on the trash hauling company. And it's an investment they don't wanna make. But if we're gonna do it there, maybe we could come up with the same plan where we put it out the week before, let the scrappers have their way, and maybe we have a volunteer force or in conjunction with a hired firm that we can make those rounds and do that for the residents. So.
It's, Alex bailed me out here. It's Saturday, May 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And they'll be on Wellhouse Drive near the Vicksburg Little League Senior Field at the back of the property to accept it.
Nine to what? Sorry.
9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And must have, be a village resident with a driver's license or state of Michigan ID to prove village residency. And it lists specific, what will be accepted, furniture, rolls of carpet, trash, must be bag, mattress, box. More importantly, what will be rejected. No longer appliances of any type, no hot tubs, construction debris, building materials, no ammunition or fireworks, rock, sand, dirt, sod, stumps, or concrete rubble won't be accepted. Dead animals and pet waste. So be sure to get that pet waste container out first. Household hazardous waste. Reading that, household hazardous waste, I'll report to the council. I did, was a limit that the village manager could approve. So we did sign that the village would participate this year in the household hazardous waste program. No car parts, major building materials, none of those, no propane, auto parts, iron or steel. And how the company explained to it is, in normal years, they would literally have 12 or 14 staffing to come through the village with multiple trucks. They literally do it with one person now. One person, a truck sits there. If they need another empty container, I think they start with two. One person drives the truck, picks up the full container, and drops an empty one. So that's where she explained the staffing to me. Thank you, Alex.
Was there anything else? Trustee Merrill?
I don't know if you guys are on the Rotary Club, but I think they were doing a metal, they still are collecting metal. And maybe you have a link for that. I don't know.
Yeah, we're trying to think. It's Mark Mitchell and Mr. Aubrey who coordinate that. And so if anyone in the village does have scrap metal, the Rotary Club will come pick it up. And they turn it in for fundraising. It's been rather successful for them.
Yeah, thank you for that, Julie. Trustee Olson.
I was downtown Thursday night. I don't know if it was St. Patty's Day or what. But I know about every business down there was busy as all get out. And had to take it kinda slow. But I think I saw Mr. Keller and his wife coming out of one of the restaurants. And I believe this week, there is a tornado drill test. I know I saw it on the internet. And I thought they said it was Wednesday, but I could be wrong. But I have to warn my wife, because when we first moved to the village 13 years ago, she never knew that the village did a tornado test. And as she's grabbing the dog and running for the basement. So I had to explain to her it happens, you know, once a month. So. But, thank you.
Trustee Reister.
Well, I would like to congratulate our president, because I did listen to the Richard Piott show. And I thought you did a fantastic job. I was very proud of you and proud of the village. And so I just would like to give you kudos for that.
Thank you. It's like getting your name in a phone book, you know, my 15 minutes of fame.
Well, you did a great job.
Thank you for that. Trustee Wagner.
So I had something this week that was brought up to me from residents as speaking to the staffing and future leadership growth and development, things like that, is opportunity for potentially the high school programs, local college programs to host interns, to maybe bolster staff throughout some of these seasons. But give them the exposure, the skills necessary. I know interning puts a lot of stress on the staff themselves, because then you're then also responsible for other individuals. But just as we speak about bench strength and growing and developing, especially our own within the village, I'd love if we could see some sort of program for that. Maybe for the broadcasting, live streaming, or just governmental, you know, happenings within the office for those types of activities. But I'm not sure if it's something we could do.
We've, I've contacted Western Michigan University's graduate program and public administration requesting intern. One of the budget presentations for the 2223 fiscal year will be update the master plan. So in conjunction with that, it would be kind of an assignment that I would hope to assign an intern to go through that process, which will be a nine-to-12-month process. So.
Excellent. And that's all I had? Thank you.
Great minds think alike. Thank you very much for that, both of you.
He's just a little ahead of me.
Trustee Holmes.
Would first like to thank Jackie and Lisa for sitting through the third village meeting this evening. It's, not only is your perseverance appreciated, but sincerely, the commitment that has continued to be made to this community cannot be overlooked. It's wonderful to see this community that I've grown up in in the last 50 years just become what it's gonna be. And I just, I just can't, again, thank you for, again, for making the commitment to the village. The only other thing that I was gonna suggest is, just regarding the whole cleanup thing, is I'll tell you, those scouts, they got more energy, being young people, than most that I know around here. And because they're in merit badges and they're in points towards that, they are readily available to do things. And so definitely tap into them, because they've done several projects in the community. And I think they'd be more than willing to help out if we put something together.
It's a great idea. As I said, this, I think this will develop. But there's a lot of ideas, good ideas, that residents have been bringing me, what we can do for the community and the volunteerism. And there's a lot of good, good ideas, but it's gonna take a lot of good, good people to get behind it. So. There's more to come on that, for sure. I'll talk about more of it through the next year. President Protem Keller.
Let me get short. We're not meeting until the 18th of April, correct? So happy Easter early, everybody, because Easter will be the day before that. And I also would like to say I really appreciate the discussion we had tonight. As trustee Holmes said, this was very, very good. You know, it shows the public that we do care about what we're doing here. And we're not just a rubber stamp. We do thoughtfully go through things. So, thank you.
Well, I'll just wrap it up by saying Denise Harold, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Congratulations. And good luck with your retirement and your life overall. Thank you for that. Thank you for being there for us. There's an opening on the Planning Commission? No?
Parks and Rec.
Oh. We went over this earlier.
Well, I saw, I saw Mr. Holmes look at you, wondering if, but no, it's Parks and Rec in the library.
I don't always get the memo.
Can you rewind that, Alex? Back us up. Parks and Recreation Committee is an opening. So I would, and that and the library board, too. So I would encourage anyone that's listening to look at the village webpage. There's an application there for a volunteer or for a board position. So either that or reach out to one of us on the council. So Parks and Recreation and the Library Board. Mackenzie's Bakery, thank you very much. That's cool. Vicksburg Land. I really appreciate what you all are doing and the investment you're making in this community. And I had a employee. So one of my goals of being on this council, I was getting sick and tired of going to Battle Creek and listening to these people, you know, 10, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, what the news that we made was always kinda negative. Right? So they'd always ask me about it. Today, they came up and said, oh, you guys got new furniture downtown. How cool. And I had no idea they followed us. And this lady is from Dowling, Michigan, you know, way north of Battle Creek. So that's pretty cool. So we're getting noticed for the right things. And I'll leave it at that. So thank you very much for your attendance tonight and your input and your passion to help this community. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Wagner will make that motion.
Holmes, I second.
All those in support, aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.